Diane, can you hear us okay?
Yep, I can hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, thank you.
Can't see you though.
Yeah, we can't see you. Can hear you.
Diane, you able to hear us, right Diane? Thumbs up, you're on mute? Cause she is gonna present, I think, but I'll text her. Yes, she runs the show.
I'm the temporary IT director.
We continue now.
You work. That's alright, we got paper. Are you ready Erica? We're gonna go ahead and call the joint meeting to order, 6:46 Tuesday, December 12th. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, first agenda item is to approve the minutes from the joint meeting on November 28th, 2023. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Any comments, changes, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number two is the consent agenda, it is A through H. Has anybody wished to withdraw anything from the consent agenda?
Chair, to withdraw 2F.
2F, got it. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through E, and G and H.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. If you can make a motion to go ahead and approve 2F, that'd be great.
Motion to approve 2F. Second.
Alright, and what's your question or your comments?
Uh, well, first of all, I'm very pleased to see that all these streets are gonna get new sidewalks and ADA ramps. I was just wondering who, which streets, how did the, were the streets chosen?
Good question, Ray, I'll have you answer that the best that you can.
Mic on.
Microphone, yeah, I don't think it's on.
Here we go, can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
So the roads were selected by the Department of Public Works in accordance with the grant, you know, requirements, which is really concentrate on the pedestrian active, you know, areas, the downtown areas. We also did a, had a survey performed of ADA ramps for a portion of the cities, and this is really an outcome of that.
Okay, my other question is, you'll recall that we had some concerns about the crosswalk from in front of the Elks Club across to South and Main.
Yep.
Is there going to be an ADA ramp added there?
So, uh, it's not part of this program, that interception is actually gonna be, a whole traffic signal is gonna be redone.
Okay.
It's part of a CMAC application that the city also received the grant for.
Right.
The grant was for 3.25 million, ultimately gonna replace four downtown traffic signals that George Street, Central Street, and Main Street intersection being one of them. As part of that project, it will be brought up to ADA compliance.
Yeah, I recall you telling me that, I didn't know if had changed, so I just want to verify that, thank you Ray.
Yep.
Ray, any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number three, to make an additional appropriation of $330,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for the landfill erosion repairs project.
Move to approve.
Second. How much are questions about this? Are we okay over here, having a little technology? Oh?
We didn't do anything, I just turned this one on.
Uh, for this, if you guys aren't heard, we'll just go ahead and continue to move along, and then we'll fix it in between the two meetings, I think. Uh, and for the audience, while we're waiting to, other, aren't many audiences, this is the joint meeting. Lot of this stuff has come through the Board of Finance, many other commissions, so it's a lot of consent and, uh, quick moving, so we'll keep it moving quickly, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number four is to approve a resolution appropriating an additional $330,000 for the landfill erosion cap repairs project for an aggregate appropriation of $1,075,000 and to waive the reading of said resolution and full text of this resolution as presented at this meeting to be incorporated into the, and made part of the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second, and we'll do a roll call vote for this, since it's a resolution. Erica, you ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, Ron, Commissioner Burns, yea or nay?
That's a yes.
Pfizer?
Yes, for me.
Yes.
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 Mayor votes yet? Passes, excellent, number five is to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, notes, or other obligations in the amount of $330,000 to finance the appropriation for the landfill erosion cap repairs project for an aggregate borrowing authorization of $1,075,000 and to waive the reading of said resolution and the full text of this resolution as presented at this meeting to be incorporated into and made part of the minutes of said meeting.
Move to approve.
Give it to Olson, second by Howe, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Ron, yea or nay?
Yes. Yes.
Pfizer's a yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Uh, number five, to make an additional appropriation of $124,000 within a special grants and donation fund funded by the opioid settlement funds.
That's number six.
Six, did I say five, sorry, that is number six, but we are on six, so I'll entertain a motion to, to, to approve that?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or questions on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And now our number seven, to make an additional appropriation of $28,538 within the general fund for perm patch as of June 30th, 2023.
Move approval.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. And Diane, can you come off mute? Cause we're on our monthly revenue and expense report presentation. We'd love to hear from you on that.
Okay, so I am off mute, and I apologize that I'm not there in person, but I will attempt to do this via Zoom. So, I, I will keep this brief, a couple of things, I mean, the tax collections are coming in as expected. Nothing there to report, the one thing I do wanna say though is the supplemental motor vehicle bills will be going out the end of the month. We're, will not generate as much of a revenue there as we had in previous years. The grant list for the supplemental was a little bit lower than previous years, but I do anticipate that we will take in an additional 450 to 500,000 over what we had budgeted. So we'll watch that as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. Um, as you can see, conveyance and building fees are exceeding projections for where we should be at this point of the year. And investment earnings, I do want to just mention, we have had some a vacancy in that position, we have a new deputy manager onboard. Um, between that and the audit, we're a little behind on posting, so everything that you see for investment earnings is still only posted through August, but we anticipate we'll get that all caught up for the next month's report. But I can say that we are well over 500,000 in investment earnings, and our average rate of return right now is between 4% and 5%, especially on the new CDs that have been issued over the last couple of weeks. Excuse me, the audit? Uh, we did receive an audit draft today, my staff and I will be going through that. We do have one little hiccup with the audit, and that is with the sewer breakout. If you remember, the sewer is now under the water department, it's now the sewer water department. And in the past, the sewer was always part of the, uh, general operations of the city and treated as a special revenue fund, now that the water department is overseeing that, it will be treated as an enterprise fund. And there've been some intricacies with getting that separated. Um, so right now, everything is complete, the auditors have everything they need. Um, but we have a couple of things we do need to iron out with the sewer breakout, so we're hoping that it does not mean that we will have to file an extension, but, um, we have the draft and we're going to do everything we can to, to get that done by December 31st. Actually, it's really in the auditor's hands right now. Um, and with regard to the budget, budget instructions went out, as you can see, and we actually have departments that are ready to input into Immunis and get their budget submitted, so um, we always know that there's going to be two or three departments that do that, so uh, everybody will be ready for February and March for all of the budget meetings. So that's really all I have to report, if anybody has anything, any questions?
Start with questions here, Cheryl, go ahead.
Microphone doesn't work, can you hear me Diane?
Uh, it's very light, but go ahead.
I'm coming to.
Okay. This, it was my understanding, this wasn't the first year water and sewer were combined, so why is it only coming up now?
So this is not the first year the water and sewer were combined, but the audit is the first time that it's coming up, why is that?
So, very good question Cheryl, so the prior audits, from a financial standpoint, we didn't turn over all of the financials until July 1 of 22. So this is the first complete fiscal year where the water department has not only handled the operational side of it, but also the financial side. So this is the first year that is actually coming off of the city's books. Operationally, the water department was handling the sewer, but when that change went through, I hate to blame everything on the pandemic and COVID, but there was a lot going on, and we chose to wait until July of last year to switch everything over to them. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We happen to have Rob here, who is nodding in agreement, so that's good. Any other questions from any members here? And how about on Zoom? Ron or Glenn, do you have any questions for Diane?
None here.
None.
None here.
Alright, very good. Thanks Diane, we appreciate you dialing in and certainly take care of what you have to, we appreciate you, you coming on.
Yeah.
I don't believe there's any other business to come before us, and we'll have a couple minutes to hopefully fix these microphones. Uh, does anybody have any other business though, before I entertain a motion to adjourn? So I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? We're adjourned.
There's gotta be a plug. Eric.
Oh, sorry.
So, let's unplug those.
Yeah?
That motion.
I lost things.
Sebastian, I said, I already have.
How about?
Kick.
Always the same.
And.
Service.
John.
Yeah, all the time.
Why, he's.
Why?
So.
Maybe.
I don't like.
Sebastian.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, I think they did do this, uh, what, what happened was 2013, something, Kendrick's mayor.
Yeah.
And in the, uh, you know, it was a full winter, and we are anticipating it may have overflow.
Yeah.
And so they opened up the library for this, so he authorized, and they go to our head and spend, or you know, money, because you got to have somebody from the library right there, so.
So that's why.
If I have the power to do that, that's fine, because when he was there, it was like, we have a council meeting tonight, why don't they authorize me to be able to do that in the case of emergency? I think it's a safety thing and, yeah, let people know.
Make sure.
Yeah.
That's.
I'm good.
Okay.
It's not necessary.
That's just.
Yeah, so, but we're plugged in, you can tell, we're plugged into this.
It's a fetal.
Now.
Is this a work needed?
Was it me?
No.
This is Sebastian.
And cable.
So, sure, right around.
Thing that goes out in the front.
Okay.
Yeah. And I.
Yeah.
I'm surprised now. Right. Hold on. Yeah.
You're unplugged?
I don't know. That's for the.
That's your power.
Oh. I ain't touching.
Everything's working.
Well, I guess we'll slide down then.
Oh, we can, Port Council's coming.
Awesome, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Port Council, can I make a quick change? And one of you, if you stay at the microphone, if you two can swap here, the microphones aren't working, so I wanna put Cheryl and Andrew over there, and you two come down here. Thank you, Steve and Conlon, and Matty. I'm, I'm muting you, wherever you want, I don't wanna speak, yeah. If I click your gift card. Alrighty.
You have to turn that one on.
Yes.
Sure. It's great, know if it's working.
Yeah, it's working. Yeah.
Have a closer one.
Don't interrupt the council.
Yeah.
I'll move. I'll have, I'll move.
Oh.
Come down, and then unfortunately.
Oh.
One more, one more, Jim. There we go.
I can't, if he's down, or I'm gonna. Oh, boy, what happened? Went off.
I'll get my stuff down. Thank you.
Musical chairs.
We'll do the updates later.
Madam Chair.
Action.
Next.
You're right.
You want these? Oh.
Oh.
We never got it.
Scott, check, we're on the center, Scott, before.
On, uh, email, oh.
Uh, these are just updates.
That's what I was going through.
It was online, I haven't even do it, so maybe they're, okay.
They left these here.
Okay.
Eric, help me. Mary, come see.
That's probably.
What's the one page of Jackie's head?
I agree.
Okay, I'm gonna give a, oh, two minute warning, but I just have to go check one thing out here, so two minute warning.
Is this different than what's on the screen?
Huh?
Jackie, is this different than what's on the computer?
I don't know, the copies were left.
No, just, I, it's, I believe it's the same.
Okay, thank you. Musical chairs.
I guess.
Your fault.
It is my fault. I don't wanna kick things.
No.
You want, uh? Uh, Jane.
No, I was gonna wait on it just till next month.
I just wanna make sure enough.
Okay.
I'm just thinking because, playing ahead because.
Yeah, but it's, um, they've got a full month, I'm just about getting, people aren't gonna go before Christmas, and along. Okay, fine, I'm fine. That's fine.
Yeah, we'll see, it's great.
Thank you. For what? We got three.
Okay. Yeah, but it's on a period, so it's special, it's a real period, and it just.
Yeah, I, I was wondering about. How come that was?
This isn't.
Okay.
Okay. It's 7:04, and I'm gonna call the city council meeting for Tuesday, December 12th to order. And as we settle down here, for those that are still standing, I'm gonna ask that you stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so for our opening ceremonies tonight, I'm gonna invite Bill Falschup from the Academy of Parks and Recreation for an announcement. So Bill, when you come up to the microphone, um, is the green light on, on the microphone? Very good, so you could speak right into it, if you just state your name again and, uh, where you're from, for the record, that'd be great.
Got it, sure. Um, my name is, uh, Bill Falsch, and I'm here for, uh, representing the American Academy of Park and Recreation Administration. I'm a recent president of that organization, and I'm a member of its Academy's National Gold Medal Committee, so I get to get a chance to look at all these terrific agencies around the country. Um, mostly the Director of Parks and Recreation for the Township of Morris in New Jersey. Um, by my GPS, about an hour, two and a half hours from here. But, uh, very similar types of communities, so I really enjoy coming here, and it's, I, I really want to congratulate you on this beautiful building, I was able to come and make a similar presentation last year. Uh, it is just, uh, you know, wonderful to see, I'm taking photos, taking them back to my, my, uh, my boss. And why can't we do something like this? But, uh, congratulations, and I'm sure it's gonna serve the citizens well. So I'm here tonight to officially present the 2023 Gold Medal Award finalist plaque to your agency. Uh, the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration is the governing organization for the National Gold Medal Award, and we consist of 125 distinguished senior administrative practitioners and scholars in the field of parks and recreation who convince, uh, who commit to advancing our profession. The National Gold Medal Award is the premier award in the park and recreation profession nationwide and even internationally, because we do have, uh, international awards that often go to some of our military bases around the world. Uh, so we're honoring agencies throughout the United States that exceed industry norms by establishing the highest standards of, uh, for delivering park recreation and community services, much like you do here in, in the city of Bristol. Uh, we are rooted in the desire to advance knowledge, encourage scholarly efforts, and provide services that advance the parks and recreation profession. In doing so, we focus on raising the bar through this National Gold Medal Awards Program. Uh, we are partners in this effort with the National Recreation and Park Association, our prime national professional association, uh, not only professional, but also, uh, uh, an association that encourages, uh, citizen leadership to participate. And we are also here with the sponsorship of the Musco Sports Lighting Program and supporting this program. Gold Medal finalist recipients measure the impact and benefit of their services while addressing community needs through the involvement of citizens, staff, elected officials in all planning, uh, process. City of Bristol, Department of Parks and Recreation, Youth and Community Services has demonstrated highly effective programs addressing, um, community health, culture, resource management, conservation, and youth services. Your agency continues to demonstrate excellence in the long-range planning focused on putting your vision into reality achievement. And we applaud and congratulate the Bristol Parks and Recreation Youth and Community Services Staff and all of its volunteers for your outstanding accomplishments. I also had a chance to talk to, uh, Josh tonight and just ask him what I thought I saw within your strategic plan, and that the city is also pursuing, uh, council of park and recreation accreditation for your, for your activities, and, uh, the academy is a long supporter of that program. Uh, we think it even focuses more that your activities towards its best practices and delivery of your system, so I do encourage you to, to really follow and, and work within that, and hopefully you'll achieve your accreditation, it's a wonderful program. So, uh, Bristol, Connecticut truly represents the best of the best. Since the awards inception in 1965, there have been only just over 300 agency named as gold medal finalists. Your agency was a previous National Gold Medal Award finalist in 2022, which I had the honor and privilege of coming here to present to you last year. And, uh, I'm so happy to be back here again. Bristol continues to be the very upper echelon of the 8,000 park, uh, and recreation agencies across our country. This finalist award was given at a special reception, gold medal reception in conjunction with the NRPA National Conference in Dallas, and all the finalists were recognized at a delegates' general session at that conference. So it's pretty impressive to see your agency represented between, uh, somewhere between 4,000 and 5,000 delegates assembled in, in the hall. We are delighted to be part of the local acknowledgement of this prestigious award to you tonight. My pleasure also to commend the elected officials of the city, the commissioners of your park board, youth commission, the arts and cultural commission, and the outstanding work of Dr. Maderos and the Parks and Recreation Youth and Community Services staff for their excellence. I also wanna congratulate, and I said this very, this last year, very importantly, uh, congratulate the citizens of your city for supporting such terrific services. And we know that they are out there enjoying those parks, enjoying those services. So on behalf of the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration, Musco Lighting and the National Recreation and Park Association, uh, we congratulate you on your success, and we are very happy to make the public presentation before the board of the finalist National Gold Medal Award. 2024. Good.
Thank you.
Josh and his team can come up, we'll get a picture with all of you, this is good, I like our new. Yep. We'll let you speak first, and I'm gonna ask you a picture, go ahead.
I just wanna thank Bill for traveling two and a half hours, you said, to be here for this presentation. I wanna thank the Academy of Park and Rec Administration for selecting the city of Bristol Youth and Community, um, City of Bristol Parks Recreation Youth and Community Services Department for this prestigious honor. Being a National Gold Medal finalist places our department as a top four agency in the entire country for our population size, and we're the first department in this region to receive the distinction in the past 50 years. So to be a finalist two years in a row, uh, we're incredibly proud of that accomplishment. The academy's recognized our department for our innovative approaches to problem solving, the collaboration and synergy of our services that span parks and recreation, youth and community services, and arts and culture, as well as our excellence in park design and management, which includes our recent award-winning park renovation project at Stocks and Casey Field. I wanna thank my deputy superintendent, Sarah Larson, that's behind me, our youth and community services supervisor, Stephen Bynum, Cindy Donovan, one of our longstanding park, uh, board commissioners who's here, as well as our entire Parks, Rec, Youth, and Community Services team, Mayor Jeff Casciano, and the entire Bristol City Council, as well as all of the dedicated. Mayor Jeff Cagiano and the entire Bristol City Council, as well as all of the dedicated volunteers that comprise our Board of Park Commissioners, Youth Commission, and Arts and Culture. We have a tremendous group of passionate individuals that work and volunteer uh very hard to make Bristol an outstanding place to live, work, and play, and I'm incredibly proud to share this recognition with each and everyone. Thank you.
Congratulations. We can all just stand in front of the podium here. That way we can all get we can get pictures. I kind of like the way the new city hall is set up here. It's gonna make it easier. You want me in? I'm in. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, this way now. For those of us on this side of the D S.
Great. Congratulations, Josh. Um as they're getting back to their seats, the NRPA reminded me of the ARPA, which is ARPA. So the other thanks too, by the way, is to the ARPA uh committee, which has uh given quite a bit of funds to go ahead and help revitalize our parks during uh this timeframe. So congratulations, all of you. Uh next year, you bring the full gold uh winning back. Alright, um I actually, let's continue our go on thing in a second. Our our opening ceremonies with a couple of announcements and recognition uh regarding other uh city hall employees, which is kind of cool, because we're gonna have three of these tonight. Uh another announcement that I'd like to make is that Anne Bedniz from our tax uh department or tax collector received the uh certified Connecticut Municipal Office Certificate, certificate, excuse me, of completion. She uh was recognized at the CCM conference last week for thirty-six hours of continuing education and dedication to advancing her career and servicing the city of Bristol, so congratulations to Anne. I don't know if she's on, but we do have one of the highest tax collection rates in the state, I think, so we do. She does a great job. Uh Tom Denote was also uh recognized by his association as the Assessor of the Year, so congratulations to Tom Denote. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Jackie to make uh one more uh official announcement here.
So I have a very special announcement to make. So every year, the Connecticut Section of American Water Works Association issues an award for customer service. In October of this year, the Customer Service Hero Award was presented to the office manager of the Water and Sewer Department. She's been a city employee since two thousand and nine and has been instrumental in improving customer service, customer outreach, as well as the production of the department's short film called The Journey of Our Water. Also, a little birdie told me that today is her birthday. So it is my honor and to acknowledge her accomplishments and without further ado, and with the mayor's permission, I would like Dawn Labella to stand up and be recognized for her accomplishments.
Congratulations. I I think we have to do one step further, and I am not the person to start this, so I'm literally gonna turn off my microphone, but mouth a few words and hope that the audience will take over. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Dawn.
And Liz.
Happy birthday to you. And congratulations, Dawn, too. Uh I was part of that video, too, which I hope people have seen, so um it was fun and you do a lot of great work for us and all the other programs as well. So congratulations to all of the Water and Sewer Department for many of you being here and being recognized. It's a great team effort. Alright, we are gonna move on to number three on the oh, sorry, number two on the agenda. Almost forgot the approval of our minutes from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any changes, amendments, corrections, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Anybody signed up on public participation? So nobody in the up? That's fine. You you don't even have to sign up. You can come right to the podium and uh we'll just ask you to state your name and address for the record, and then we will go to um we don't have the special meeting minutes, so that is a good catch. We'll we'll do that next time. What's that? They weren't attached, no, so. Um oh, they are attached, actually.
We just don't have it on the agenda.
Yeah, and I didn't read it on the agenda. Hang on one second. We're gonna uh I'll entertain a motion to approve the special meeting.
Second.
Any changes or corrections to that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Good catch, Sue, thank you. Name and record, name and address for the record. Sorry about that.
I'm Carol Jackson. I live at one oh three Judson Avenue in Bristol. And um I wrote a letter to mayor and council members which you would have received today in your email, but I know you probably didn't have time to read it yet, because it's kind of hot. But um it's about the need for expanding the senior center and um first, I cite some numbers that twenty-eight percent of the Bristol population is fifty-five and over, which is criteria for the senior center membership. And of them, um that twenty-eight percent, about a third of those people have registered senior center and take advantage of its programs. Um but it's very crowded. As you know, parking's a huge problem. Some programs are full. Some programs are full to capacity and then there's waiting lists, and sometimes they just don't even have the waiting list because too many people have signed up. Example, we had uh for the Christmas dinner, people stood in line from seven o'clock in the morning to eight thirty and they opened to sign up, and one of the people, being elderly, standing near that long, fell and um had to give some medical but it was just minor. Got some water and stuff. We're working on ways to mitigate that so it doesn't happen, but it's just one of the things. Also, classes are very full and these programs are important because as seniors, a lot of people don't have their family, so the dinners with the other seniors are very important for social reasons. And for myself, the exercise classes are important because I don't get physical therapy anymore and you can't go to, you know, HealthTrax and get this, you know, sitting exercise. They they want to do zumba and spin, things that are way beyond my capabilities. Probably a lot of you are. But um so at the beginning of this year, we were told that the Board of Ed was gonna move out the preschool, which they did, and then we were under the that I was under the impression from Commission on Aging and that the senior center was going to jacky around some positions and that that space would become available. Based on nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five contract that says Board of Ed has to use it for education. Out. But it found out that no one really talked to the Board of Ed, um at least according to Dr. Carbone, who I spoke with. And um now they want the city to find them space to trade for the space in the building that houses the senior center. So um that you had only known that at the beginning of the year instead of the beginning of twenty twenty-four. Now they're saying that it's gonna be high to get it all squared away, from my understanding, which we already lost a year. And and the senior population keeps growing. So I'd like to know how to make this a priority for the city of Bristol and, you know, who can who's like heading this up, because I also did a spreadsheet. Nobody hears Project anymore. And plus, I don't have any dates, really. But of all the tasks that I know of that are involved, and these are very um timely, you know, time-consuming tasks because uh the Bristol Burlington Health Department is gonna move, this is the plan, is gonna move where where the ed was, and then the senior center is gonna take over the space where Bristol Board Health is. So the space, the B O E space, um BBH has to go in there and look at it and figure out what they want, and then the engineers have to decide if it's doable, and then once they vacate their space, then the whole thing has to happen with their side for the senior center. So it's just a huge project and that's asking you to make it more of a priority. Already lost a lot of time.
Thank you, Carol. I appreciate it. Uh the first thing I'm gonna do is congratulate you for coming and doing an excellent recap. You have done your homework and that is exactly really where we are, but maybe I'll just add a teeny bit in there is we are in discussion with the Board of Ed. I actually have a meeting next week with uh Dr. Carbone and Dr. Dieter uh to find other space for them. We do have to then go through the legal process of changing that nineteen eighty-four agreement that you talked about. But one of the other big um pitfalls to this is that we have to fund this. So our budget process, as Diane was talking about, I think you were here for the the joint meeting, is that we have to allocate funds to go ahead and do this. So the owner of this project will be the city of Bristol through Public Works. So um I would ask you to kind of stay focused on the Public Works meeting, which is the third Thursday of the month. Uh I assure you, it is a priority, but we have lots of priorities. Remember, City Hall took a year and a half to build uh and I will definitely acknowledge to you as well, too, that, you know, I've been to the aging meetings. I I hear the numbers, you know, we're growing by twenty or thirty per month, um so we understand the need and well.
Fifty to sixty.
Yeah, unfortunately, we do lose some senior citizens every month, too, so I've been doing the math, but yeah. Yeah, but we appreciate what you're saying. I think we hear you. Uh we take it under advisement here and it's moving forward. Uh city government takes a little time to to maneuver, and the biggest part is Public Works needs to get the funding so they can allocate the funding to do the engineering work and get things going, and our budget season, you know, starts in the next couple of months, so continue to come and advocate and ask your seniors to do that, but I'm I'm asking for your patience. Alright, thank you.
I um I just like one of the reasons I voted for you is because you're one of the mayors that gets stuff done. And it's been a problem with the city.
Yeah, I and I hear you. We are we are definitely working to make this done. That was on the record. You said it on the record. Yeah. Yeah. I appreciate that, and I I think the whole council hears that, and I really do appreciate it because you saved me a lot of discussion on the city council, because they know what the process is. We all have our own little committees that we're on and we work on it, and there are many competing priorities, but you are very important to us and it certainly is a a growing need. We're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh any public participation from Zoom? Hearing none, we move on to uh number four, which is announcements. I'm gonna start on my far right, because there's not many people on my left anyway. Cheryl. And those microphones are working now, right?
Maybe. There we go.
There you go.
Thank you. Um I have two that I want to share. Um first of all, uh the City Arts and Culture does have uh quite the weekend lined up. This uh Saturday night and Sunday. Uh we have Christmas with the Nashville King, starring John Beardsley, a Bristol native. Now, I'm gonna say that the tickets for Saturday night are mostly sold out. There are a few still available, but the matinee on Sunday that begins at two P M still has many seats in the balcony that are available. Tickets are forty-one dollars and fifty cents. This is a show you don't want to miss. It's a great weekend to celebrate Christmas. Um there'll be some other Christmas announcements further down um the D S as we go on. And then uh one other announcement I have, um we have a young man who's an Eagle Scout um contender, and he is working on his Eagle Scout, and his project is to build a Gaga pit at West Bristol. And I could say I've played Gaga, and it's quite the aggressive game. You're basically in a circle or an octagon, and you're trying to get other people out by hitting them in the legs with a ball. It gets really rough. Um it's harder on ice, by the way, but it's a fun game and it's fast-moving and youth really love it. So he's trying to raise twenty-five hundred dollars. Um and this would be there for the city to use. Um if you have bottles and cans to donate, please reach out to his father, who is Nathan Brandy Bogley on Facebook, or reach out to me and I will get the message to him so that we can start collecting these bottles and cans and build this, you know, great um asset. It's a great fun game and it's a great purpose. Anytime there's an Eagle Scout, I want to help them out, because I think scouting is such a great program. So thank you.
You, Cheryl, Andrew.
Yep, go ahead.
You got her playing kickball. Stay away from a Gaga pit. I just have one. Um December sixteenth is the wreaths across America Day, where they place wreaths on placed on veterans' graves and thousands of cemeteries across America. The wreath laying is in honor of our veterans. That's been going on for, I'm not even sure how long. Uh this year, the event will be is being hosted is the Catherine Catherine Gaylord Chapter of the Daughters of American Revolutionary Wars on at noon on Lu the Lewis Street Cemetery. A number of veterans and organizations are being taken play uh taken part in this event. Um so we hope you can see you on December sixteenth at noon at the Lewis Street Cemetery.
Thank you, Andrew. Sue?
Okay, I have a a small list here. Um all Bristol P D. Uh so first up, um Bristol P D just had Coffee with a Cop yesterday at Cafe Real, uh and it was a huge success. Stay tuned for the next um event and location probably after the first of the year. Also, just this past Friday, we had our latest recruit graduate from the Police Academy and um the recruit is um already into the F T O program and doing quite well. Um we also have, just a reminder, if you haven't seen it on Facebook, the Frankie Fund Patch, ten dollars. Um Chief, you said you weren't gonna be here tonight, because I asked you to bring me one. But I but I can I can head over myself. Um these are available for purchase um over at the Bristol Police Department front lobby. Uh let's see. Uh Shop with a Cop, the first one of these in the series was held on Friday. Um and Chief Gould and his team um had a great evening with a group of youths. That was through the Bristol Youth um services here on uh at the um for the city. And then tonight, there was another shop Shop with a Cop um connected with the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, and both of those events um are thanks to and a big shout out to Reach because they helped fund both of those. Let's see. The Police Department is still taking unwrapped toys, and if you um still have any donations, you can drop them off at the front lobby over at the Police Department. That goes towards the Salvation Army, and I believe that's until the nineteenth, so you still have about a week left. Um a little PSA, make sure that you lock your car doors while you're warming up your cars as the weather gets a little colder. Uh the Police Department has been trying to get that word out there, and we just want to avoid a rash of problems this winter. Let's see, another notice is December fifteenth. Uh overnight parking ban starts and enforcement uh will also kick off this Friday. That's this Friday. So just a reminder, and maybe we can all put that out on our city council pages um and and stuff, just to give people a heads up.
Yep, and and I want to just make a clarification. That means Thursday night, we'll turn in That means Thursday night will turn into the fifteenth, so you can't park your car outside on Thursday night on the street. Be that clear. Well, we'll make a video, too. We'll get it out this year. There'll be a few.
Um, let's see here. And the last one, I wanna give a big shout out, and he is here in the audience tonight. Um, I do wanna give a very big shout out. I think my first year on City Council, um, I had mentioned that Chief Gould um had brought the Connecticut Chiefs of Police Association Winter Mini Expo for the very first time to the Doubletree. And this Thursday, two days from now, we will be having our third annual um, mini expo at the Doubletree. And the information is that this has been held for many, many years in other locations. Um, and this year is the absolute most heavily attended um mini convention that there has been since inception. And I think that's all credit to our chief and the fact that he decided to have it here in Bristol at our Doubletree. So.
Centrally located. Nice job, Chief.
Got everything.
And the location and the presence. Uh, Eric?
All right, I just have two. Um, Saturday Night Lights, uh, this Saturday, the sixteenth, from five to six thirty um, on the Bames, Bames School Field, uh, Seventy Memorial Boulevard. The rain date is Sunday, the seventeenth. Though uh, W T I C will be there uh along, and you'll have sing-along with Carol, uh, Carolers, a visit from Santa. Uh, there will be a countdown to a tree lighting at six o'clock. Interfaith carols, luminary displays, uh, hot chocolate is available for purchase, but the rest of the event is free and open to the public. Um, it's a little early. We're gonna get this in one more time, but join us for our fifth, you know, uh, conversation. Uh, it's called First Degree, First Agreed, One First Degree of Separation, a comedy show that tries to bring dialogue, awareness, and acceptance to those suffering from depression through laughter. It will be held at the Rockwell Theater on Sunday, January, or Saturday, January twentieth, from six to eight thirty P M. Entry is free, but go to the Bristol Parks and Rec website to choose your seats. Thank you.
Great. I think we have a decent turnout for that already. Josh isn't here, but I think there were a hundred ninety-one tickets already sold. There isn't ninety-one. But there's significant number. Yeah, so one ninety-one. So uh, definitely a a great use of the theater, good timing for the event. Should be fun. Jackie?
I don't have anything other than the one I already did.
Oh, very good. And that was a, that was a fun one. Sebastian, you're up.
Sure, just one, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Friends of the Bristol Public Library is holding their holiday book sale the month of December. Uh, new and nearly new gift quality books uh for adults and children, um, children's picture books, movies, anti-v series on DVD, music CDs, and such items uh will be available. Items will be added frequently, and this will uh, this will take place in the lobbies of the Bristol Public Library and the Man Ross Library throughout the month of December, uh, whenever the libraries are open. That's it.
Thank you. Any other announcements that we missed? Very good. I don't have anything further. We checked everything off. We'll move on to number five, which is the Consent Calendar. Items A through E. Does anybody w- wish to withdraw something from the Consent Calendar? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve that Consent Calendar.
Who moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number six, we move on to reports and committee reports. Six A is a salary committee, and this is uh to recommend that the City Council approve an increase in the wages of the Bristol Parks Recreation, Use, and Community Services Part-Time Seasonal Staff as proposed and referred to the Board of Finance um for informational purposes. Cheryl?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in the, in the uh agenda is the uh memo that we reviewed on the Salary Committee. And basically, the state of Connecticut did have an increase, um, a mandated increase in minimum wage, which means our our first entry level or Level One of part-time Parks employees will all go to this new wage. Now, we have some returning staff and some tenured staff that if we also didn't increase their wages, what we'd have is we'd have compression of the wages. And so your entry level would be coming in and making the same as seasoned veterans or supervisors even. So it was recommended that all the positions, the temporary positions, all receive an equitable increase. This was reviewed in the Salary Committee. Um, a couple things to note from that. It did pass through Salary Committee unanimously, as we all were in agreement. And the majority of these increases, because they are our part-time staff, won't take effect until the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five um budget year. So as budgets are being prepared, the Parks Department is prepared to put this into their package. There could be an eight to ten percent, uh, excuse me, eight to ten thousand dollar increase that hits this current fiscal year. But the Parks Department assured us they're able to cover that increase by surpluses and other accounts. So it won't really affect any contingencies or any other overruns. We felt this was fair and present it, and we would now like Council to also agree so this could be forwarded to the Board of Finance and adopted for when they bring on the staff for this summer.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And um, Cheryl, while we're on you, do you have any reports?
Um, no, I just have a couple things I do wanna bring up. Um, you know, I've gotten some inquiries, uh, received some inquiries, and I think some other people on the Council may have as well in regards to the proceeds from nipper sales. Um, and so our Public Works Director um has put together a memo that will be going to the Public Works Board. Uh, it will be in our next packet. We meet on Thursday, the twenty-first, and we'll be discussing this memo. We'll be discussing what um, you know, to date, the city's received two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We've expended about fifty thousand of that. And we'll be t- talking again about how to to spend this and working through um how we wanna approach this. It's, as we all know, it's a fairly new law. I think we're all kind of amazed at how many nippers are purchased in the city. Um, you know, I don't wanna give the number here. It'll be in the packet, but we're gonna discuss this um robustly in our next Public Works meeting. And so if somebody out there has a question on this, I encourage you to zoom into that meeting and listen to the full committee debate this and discuss it and come up with recommendations. Also, if any members of the public have suggestions on things they'd like to see the city spend, please forward that to me, the mayor or Public Works Director. You know, we're, we're going through this in brainstorming.
Yep.
That's one announcement. Um, another committee announcement, two, two more, please, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Is I just wanna share with everybody that the, I guess we're calling ourselves the Dog Pound Committee. I'm not quite sure if we have another savvy name for this, but um, we did have our first meeting, and we are assembled, and we're moving forward, uh, working with both, again, Public Works and our purchasing agent. And uh, I'll be having more of a report next month after we have our second meeting. But I just wanted to let members of the public know this is, this is going forward. And then um the, I just did wanna share from transportation, and I know, Mayor, you have publicly announced this, too. We do know the new bus route had been in the governor's budget. Um, but now they're announcing it, and they're ready to to move forward with it. And this is the bus route that will connect our southeast business park, south, yeah, southeast Business Park, the um, the new convention center, the the Doubletree, Amazon's warehouse, Leek Compounds. And most importantly, we also have the adult education. And we've been asking for this bus route. Transportation has been a big advocate for this, and this will help our people get to where jobs are and also get to where adult education is in a fairly economical way, especially if they lack their own personal transportation. As that route started, this is my one question, I believe it has.
Yep, I was.
November fir- fifth, I think, was the launch date. So um, I just wanted to share that with the public. It's the five oh two route, if you're looking for transportation to those locations. And.
That'll eventually connect people to downtown as well, too, as we think about the development that's happening so that people can live downtown and go to work in those places.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, those are my committee reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, by the way, A C O Building Committee, so that's a little shorter for you. A C O, Animal Control Facility, or or, oh, the A C O, sorry. A C O is Animal Control Officer. A C F uh Building Committee.
But wait a minute, isn't it U C O that has the dog pound? So, yeah, so we can be the dog.
I think your dog pound's fine. I'm just giving you other options.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, let me go to Sebastian next because uh, we have the Ordnance Committee uh, six B on here, and then we'll go back around for other reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so for context, this is in regards to uh, the sale of alcohol at uh, the Rockwell Theater. Um, I have a motion to waive the reading and a uh, motion introduced. If there's any discussion to follow, that's fine. Um, in accordance with Section forty-one F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances to be introduced to the state pertaining to Section fifteen dash forty-eight be waived.
The second, second from Jackie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carries. I mean, go with the regular motion?
In accordance with Section forty-one F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby moved that the time and place of Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty-four, at four forty-five P M in Meeting Room one dash one, City Hall, first floor, one eleven North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordnance Committee, and that the City Clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by City Charter.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. Um, first, just a uh, high-level comment. This is something that has been a little time coming. I take full responsibility for that because we had talked with the superintendent and kinda had agreement that we're gonna get a couple shows under our belt, get that first year moving. And um, now this is open for public discussion. So I think people that have thoughts on this should certainly weigh in at the January second hearing. And um, thank you to the Ordnance Committee for a little bit of patience, but I think it was warranted to get our feet underneath us. We are doing very well in the theater, by the way, and the programs this weekend should be a great addition. Any other comments from the Ordnance Committee?
I was just gonna say, this is a hearing, so this will be back before the Council probably at our next meeting with the results of what ordinance hears at that hearing. So I think we're all anxious to hear from the public. Um, and I was just going to encourage that if anybody can't attend at four forty-five, I've had a couple people mention they're at work. They can email their comments to the city, and we'll make sure they're read into the record. So um, myself, I, Sebastian is our chair, and.
Jackie.
Jackie, thank you, Jackie, our, our ordinance um committee members. Thank you.
To the chair, we, we are soliciting information from the public and and comment and opinion, and I'll be putting it out there. Um, the theater's off and running, as we know. We've put on shows. We have a schedule now in place. So there's a lot of parties that have been involved in getting it up and running. Um, we do know this is an important subject for a lot of folks. So we're gonna be asking folks, if you do have an opinion on it, to please come out and share it. And uh, at any and all stage in the process here, the uh, um, the fact-finding um mission here for for getting opinion on the alcohol sales.
Anything else you wanna add, Jackie? Anybody else on the Council? No, maybe one clarification, too. This would be for events that are run by the city, which is potential of eighty dates per year, but we've at, been averaging through the Arts and Culture Commission and Parks and Rec about one per month. So this would not pertain to Board of Education functions. So I wanted to just make sure that that's clear, but people come armed with your thoughts. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Sebastian, do you have any other reports from any other?
All right, I do know for the Firehouse Three Building Committee, we did get an update from the architect today and uh, s- a revision of the plans. I know we had um, a meeting uh, not too long ago, and we were trying to stay under budget. We got figures that were not expected, so we're trying to work within the budget that we have and the timeframe as well. So uh, we're, we're looking at those figures, and we'll have another meeting shortly. But with the the Northeast Building Committee and with the Firehouse Three Building Committee, we're dealing with with tough decisions here on budgets, and we're working with what we got, really, is what we're trying to stick to. And uh, so those meetings obviously are continuing.
Thanks, and I wish Carol was still here, but maybe Jason could pass along to us. We got Northeast, we got Firehouse, we got Animal Control Facility. So lots of priorities going on. Anything else, Sebastian?
Thank you.
Jackie?
I have no.
All right, thank you. Eric, any committee reports?
Um, I have Ferret Commission met on November twenty-ninth. Uh, the commission had five cases on the agenda, four of them resolved by Corporate Counsel Mattany. Um, by working with the tenants and landlord, uh, the last case was continued to the next meeting due to the landlord being out of the country for personal business. Thank you, Attorney Mattany, for uh, for your work in resolving those four cases. The December meeting will be held uh, still at the Public, Bristol Public Library, but meetings after that will be held at City Hall. Um, Board of Education. The Board recognized Lauren Gonzalez, a sixth grade, ch- uh, sixth grader at Chippens Hill Middle School. She's a published author of a few short stories and two books. The latest book, Together Forever, is a story that navigates the complexity of friendship and extending hands to all regardless of their differences. This book can be found on Amazon and Barnes and Noble. Sixth grader. Can't believe it.
Awesome.
Um, there were also a few reports. Then the Board uh, had a very informative presentation on legal obligations of the Board presented by Attorney Jessica Ritter. The presentation touched on many areas, including roles and responsibility of the Board, conduct of the Board, Board uh, Board Meeting Essentials, electronic communications, and much more. And that's it.
Thank you, Eric. Sue, anything to report this month?
Um, just a little bit for the Real Estate Committee. Um, we are progressing with um, an initiative that we had put in a few months back where um, we are auditing every single piece of city-owned property in the city of Bristol. And um, it's been quite the task. Um, I, kudos to Attorney Steeg. Was he there? Is he there? He's out there. Um, and our, uh, Ryan, our surveyor. Um, i- it's, we've only kind of gotten um, seven, eight, about eight or nine properties underway so far, and it seems like every single piece of uh, property that we own has some sort of issue or encroachment on it. So uh, it's gonna take a while for us to get through this, but we are hard at work on that. So um, moving on to.
I can interrupt you there, too. By the way, this just came up at um, a previous meeting. I think it was strategic and uh, planning, uh, oh, in the ARPA meeting as well, too, is so many of these assets, like the Barnes Chapel, um, a lot of people are not that familiar with what what we own. Uh, so this would be a great report to share along, even where you are at this point, Sue. I'd ask that you get that to the Council people because as we sit on other boards and commissions, it's, it's good to know. Yeah, I know, that's not well-known what we own, and I think that'll be helpful for all of us. So, thank you.
And I think even the the latest parcel was um, an adjoining piece of property that we own to the parcel that the new firehouse is being built on.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so there was like a little bit of a overlap in use, um, but I think that's being worked on now. So it does seem like, um, and actually, Attorney Steeg just put together a list of city-owned property that could be available for sale and a list of city-owned property that is not available for sale. So maybe that's something that at the next City Council meeting, we can put out to, you know, people just so that they have an understanding of, you know, city property and what our business is for.
Good. Is that all you have to real estate, or you have another?
That's it for real estate, and then just for code enforcement. Um, one of the big things right now is that we have a brand-new code enforcement officer, uh, Thomas Damon Smith. Um, he just joined our, our building department and our code enforcement team, and he has just hit the ground running. Um, he has embraced um, our philosophy of how we want um, these code enforcement cases investigated and handled, and when necessary, um, enforced. And he is just, he is, he's doing a tremendous job. Um, this month, we have had, from the building department, we've had over five thousand dollars worth of tickets issued. And from uh, Public Works, we have had over fifteen hundred dollars of tickets issued. And again, we don't issue tickets to build our general fund. This is all to gain compliance and to get these properties up to par. Um, I think, I think that's it for now. I think we'll have a lot more for code enforcement to report next month.
Good. Look forward to hearing that report. Andrew?
Uh, I just have two. First one's from the School Readiness Council. Uh, the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood just released its report and a five-year plan for the Blue Ribbon Panel on Childcare. I put the link onto my web Facebook page. You can find it there. I'll see if I can link it to the mayor's page. Um, and there's also still, if you're looking for youth uh, pre-K, we have full day availability at the Bristol Child Development Center, half-day at the Edgewood Pre-Kindergarten Academy. we have full day availability at the Bristol Child Development Center, half-day at the Edgewood Pre-Kindergarten Academy. And Pearl Harbor Day just happened, and I want to read these words because I couldn't make it work. World War II veterans attended the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day at American Legion Post Two in Bristol. There were Joe Caminiti, Dick Fitz, Jim Cleveland, and John Fensick. As they gathered for the cemetery, they learned that due to all the funerals that Post Two Honor Guard had been attending as flag and rifle salute team, there was a shortage of the ammo for the funeral that day. All four of the World War II veterans agreed that the ammo slated for the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day Rifle Salute was to be given to the Honor Guard to be used at the veteran at the West Cemetery. Thus, to ensure that there was enough ammo to be used by the Legion for the rifle salute that to be laid for rest, Joe Caminiti said, not only for himself, but for the other three gentlemen, that I'm no hero. The true heroes are in the ground.
Joe will be a hundred years old on October thirteenth, the amazing gentleman. So, yeah. But I think the Connecticut's only Iwo Jima survivor at this point, too, so.
Between those four gentlemen, it's over three hundred years.
Yep. Cool stuff. Thank you for going to that, Andrew. I got a hard time for not showing up by Joe Caminiti, but I had another meeting, so that happens. Any other reports out there from any council members? I do have one that I would do want to give. Okay, if you have one, let me know, interrupt me after. But ARPA, we, I just want to give an update to that because I think we hit a very interesting milestone. We are gonna cut off any award recipient that hasn't spent their money by January thirty-first, which is rules that we've put in. The fifteen-member ARPA committee had the task of, you know, utilizing that funds appropriately. And at this point, we have ninety-five percent of the funds allocated, so we have built a little contingency fund, which quite honestly, almost every single project is over, so we know we need a contingency. The contingency is too small. But that ninety-five percent allocation and right around fifty percent of the funds actually already spent is so far above the national average, it's not even close. So U H Y, that works with a lot of the municipalities and a report that came from the federal government showed that approximately fifteen percent of all ARPA funds throughout the country have been allocated. I'm sorry, have been spent and fifty percent, less than fifty percent has been allocated. So we are in great shape. This money had to be allocated by the end of twenty twenty-four, so we're pretty much a year ahead. And that was a good thing. We were supposed to stimulate the economy with this and get things going. And the fact that we have fifty percent out already is is tremendous. So I just wanted to give the ARPA Task Force some kudos for some great work on that. That's all I had. One more, Andrew. Go ahead.
I just remembered this. Horaceville, Post Two O Nine did a lot of work in that veterans park. Brand-new, what was it, attached to the bell, we had an eagle that was ripped off and torn. These are for veterans. So if anybody out there knows anything, reach out to Brian Avery, any one of us on the council, the mayor. We just want it back. We make sure that people understand what they actually did. Anybody knows it, please feel free to reach out to any of us.
Thanks, Andrew. All right. I think we're ready to move on to number seven, which is old business. I don't have any old business. Does anybody have any old business? Number eight is new business. I think we have two pieces of new business. Who'd like to go first?
Here, I have a
Go ahead.
Motion here, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion here to award contract two zero two four dash zero five two, construction of retaining wall at Center Square in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to affect said contract.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So a little explanation on this one, too.
Sure. Right, yeah, this was a this was through the ARPA Task Force. That was, it was three hundred thousand that was approved to assist with the building of the retaining wall behind the bicarrier movement there. So since the city was the formal applicant through E C D, it looks like it's more appropriate and makes more sense to treat this more as a contract than a grant, which is what this motion does.
And this is part of literally nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for all of the area around Center Square and North Main Street. The great news, too, if anybody's been on the second floor or higher of this building, you can see that they are moving very fast, so we're trying to keep up with them. So that's why we brought this on as new business and makes total sense from where I sit. Any questions or comments from the group here? Hearing, did we do a second, by the way? Did you get a second? Good. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And motion carries. All right. We have another one, Sue.
Okay. The motion is I hereby move that if the governor declares a cold weather protocol during this twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four winter season, then the mayor or acting mayor be authorized, if necessary, to open up the Main Street Library or any other city-owned building he or she deems appropriate to be an emergency warming center to any Bristol resident in need.
Second.
Second. So Sue, I'll let you talk a little bit more about this, too. Go ahead.
I if I could just set it up and probably say a few more words than I probably should, but here. We we have a housing crisis in our state and more importantly, here in Bristol. Ask anyone who is seeking to obtain any kind of housing at all in the last couple of years. There's inflated inflated prices, extremely low inventory, high interest rates, and this housing crisis reaches all segments of our society, especially hitting our homeless population really hard. This crisis essentially puts people who struggle to find the means and the tools to even be able to secure and retain housing in a fierce competition with a larger group of people who are much better positioned to score the win when it comes to housing. In twenty twenty-three, the state of Connecticut has declared that homelessness is a public health crisis. As of the end of last week, our data showed that there were eighty-one unsheltered people here in Bristol. About a third of that number are fifty-five and over. Saint Vincent de Paul Mission of Bristol, who is our one and only homeless shelter in the city of Bristol, worked diligently with many of our community partners and opened up Bristol's Cold Weather Overflow Shelter as of this past Friday night. It provides twenty beds. The first couple of nights, all twenty beds were filled, and there was about five people each night that were turned away. And we actually opened the overflow shelter a little earlier in the season than we have in the past few years, and it's still kind of warm out. We are Bristol. We are all heart. Over the last couple of weeks, an organic action group kind of has formed. This group consists of the mayor, others from the mayor's office, Bristol Social Services, Senior Center, Police, Fire, Building, Code Enforcement, Saint Vincent de Paul, Bryan's Angels, Agape House, Bristol Burlington Public Health, United Way, Main Street Foundation, and several other incredible community partners. This group has no leader and it has no name. They don't just meet and talk. They are coming up with creative solutions and most importantly, just doing. We're a community that has a lot of needs this coming up winter, and we all kind of need to step up to address this crisis. And and I commend the mayor. The thing with this motion is that in the past, when the governor issues a cold weather protocol, our municipality, mainly SER, Harley and Emergency Services, and then utilizing our SER team, they have opened up a warm, a warming center to allow people who need it in Bristol to come in and warm up and to charge their phones and to have a place to go during severe cold weather. We haven't done that since pre-COVID. And the numbers that we're looking at this winter and and the increasing number of homelessness and uncertain of how many people are going to be unsheltered. You know, at today's meeting, the mayor stepped up and kind of made it all possible so that our emergency services could start that planning part. Like I said, the overflow shelter only provides twenty beds. We had eighty-one unsheltered on Thursday night, and now we only have twenty beds. That leaves an awful lot of people out there. So I think this is a huge step to help protect our community.
And just to clarify what the motion is, it's maybe a little bit of overkill, to be honest, because I think I probably have the authority to do this. We haven't opened up an overnight sleeping facility at the library since like twenty thirteen or something like that. It's been a while ago. And that will cost the city a little bit of money because we'll have to pay for overtime for the staff there. So we just thought we would put that out there and make this more transparent. Again, if needed, hopefully we have a nice warm winter, and this is the governor is expected to do some cold weather emergencies, and we'll see how the shelter lasts. The other thing is the SER team will, by their call to action, is to is to man this and work this, so there wouldn't be additional cost. We're just being prepared. I think you did a good job covering everything else, and that was a little recap. Any questions, comments from the team? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I'm not aware of any other new business. Do we have any other new business? No, we move on to number nine, which is resignations. Erica? Great. Can I entertain a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignations and to send a letter to each participant thanking them for their service to the city.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, December appointments. We'll start first with the Energy Commission, and I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Derek Jones, who will replace the vacancy left by Karen Hints, and that term will expire in ten twenty-six.
Moved. Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The Housing Authority, I would like to entertain a motion to reappoint Ricky Bufard. That term will expire in twelve twenty-six.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Housing Code of Appeals to reappoint John Fitzgerald, the term expires twelve twenty-six.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Recreation Board to reappoint Robert Fiorito and reappoint Emily Mashad, both those terms expire in twelve twenty-six.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Police Commission to reappoint Terry Lewis, that term will expire in twelve twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On school readiness, we need a motion to approve Matt Baronowski. He works for physical therapy and sports medicine, so he will be the business representative, and he's replacing Jennifer Billbrant.
Oh, moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The Sewer Commission, check something here, it's different. To reappoint Kathy Ferrier and Frances Perini, those terms will expire in twelve twenty-six.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Stormwater Trust to appoint Fay Duquette with a term that will expire in twelve twenty-six.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And they are two separate boards and commissions, so on the Water Commission, but they they all serve the same. To reappoint Kathy Ferrier and Frances Perini, that term will expire in twelve twenty-six.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And on the Zoning Board of Appeals to appoint Rory Geo as an alternate, his term will expire in twelve twenty-six, and we're also gonna appoint Liza Selgado Circo. Her term will expire in seven twenty-six, and she's gonna replace Christopher Callahan in that term.
So moved.
Second.
Rose and Grim, he's got the motion, and Sue's got the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I don't think we have any others. There were quite a few reappoints, which is great, so I thank people for staying engaged. I know that in January, February, and March in particular, we'll have some new assignments that will come open, so I always encourage people to reach out to the mayor's office if you have interest in serving. We're always filling boards, and there are several that are are vacant right now. Okay. So let me move on to, what place here? We are gonna do
item eleven?
Eleven, here we go. I want to go and read it. To approve a resolution to submit an E N P G grant application to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute the application and any and all documents associated with the application and grant for the city clerk to validate the mayor as a city official authorized to sign these documents on behalf of the city council and to refer the matter to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Move approval.
So we had Cheryl as the as the motion, and Sebastian as the second. This is a resolution, so we'll do a roll call vote when you're ready, Erica. Oh, let's let's waive the reading. Can I have a motion?
Motion to waive the reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Erica. We have the motion in the second now that's on the floor for the approval.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Number twelve, to award the contract two P two four dash zero four zero, deployment of Schneider Echo Structure System at Bristol Schools to S N E Building Systems in the amount of two million, six hundred sixty thousand dollars to refer to the Office of Corporation Counsel for contract review and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to affect said contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen. Number thirteen tends to be our cannabis item. It's been on our agenda for many times. It's always thirteen. In this case, it's, I believe, unlucky again, unlucky thirteen. So Bud's Goods is a applicant for us. They did submit a package, but in looking at that package and doing further research, we're in the place that we've been before where this applicant has all of their requirements that we require with one minor exception. So their their social equity approval has not been approved. They have applied for a social equity permit. I just want to put on for the record, and again, this is unfortunate, but they were originally a lottery winner. So their impression, and I don't know if this was, you know, the state changing or them not understanding, their original impression was that they did not need a social equity approval. And that that may have been true, but through the course of the process, they have realized this change. We have had one steady, consistent process, and we are not going to change our process. So I did have a discussion with them on Friday. They are in agreement, and we've done this before. I'm gonna suggest to the council that we entertain a motion to table this until they complete their social equity portion, and then we will bring it up. We have done special meetings for that before. I like this because the public at least knows that this is coming, but I don't think they're ready yet, so.
Motion to table.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number fourteen is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute the Lotsip Grant Commitment Fund for the Divinity Street Culvert Replacement Project in the amount of one million, one hundred four thousand, eighteen dollars and seventy-four cents, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign any and all federal, state, and local environmental permit applications required to complete construction of the Divinity Street Culvert Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Great. I've been out to this project, and this one caused a little bit of damage in the the past storms, so long overdue. Any comments or questions? I know Ray is here on this one.
Question, Mayor, where exactly on Divinity?
So it's right before where the the Dollar General store that's closed. It's pretty much if you're going west out of town, it's on the right-hand side before you get there. It comes from the left to the right hand, but the problem actually was on the right-hand side of the road. That's the north side of the road.
Through the chair, is that where the the road got filled up before with water?
Not really, actually. It kind of ran under the road and over the road, but that wasn't the big problem. I think you're thinking about down where Divinity Street met School Street. That's where we had a lot of the flooding. But Ray, I have that right, right? There wasn't big flooding there. It was it was more damage in the surrounding area and and peoples and damage in the surrounding area and, and people's, and then one particular person's yard actually.
Doesn't it run like right alongside the parking lot of?
Yes.
Dollar General.
Exactly, and runs right through there, so there's a, there's a culvert there, very old culvert. Um, Ray, how many years old, hundred, maybe more? Yeah, okay, good, that's close. Yeah, a little, almost a hundred year old, so time to be replaced and, uh, thank, thanks for the Lotsip money from the state to go ahead and do this. All right, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And motion carries. So we have number fifteen and sixteen, which is Executive Session, Attorney Kerwick, who's coming in with us?
Uh, on both matters, uh, Eric Bartlett, our outside counsel is gonna come in on both of those. Uh, Mark Penny is going to come in on, uh, the firefighter, uh, cancer relief account. And, uh, Diane, I was kind of hoping you were gonna be here to, uh, come in, but, uh, uh, we'll fill you in later on.
Okay. Very good, so I will entertain a motion to go into Executive Session.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Who is it?
Ray put it here.
Alrighty, so just as a reminder, we were in executive sessions, no votes were taken, I will entertain a motion to come out of Executive Session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We have no motions, uh, I don't believe there's any business to come before us, so I intend, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got it? We're looking to get out of here quickly, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Happy holidays.
Yep.
Merry Christmas.
I suppose.